Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, February 22, 2023, and this special meeting in the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order. In Sandpoint City Council Chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding. Also present are Councilors Kate McAllister, Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, Andy Groot, Jason Walker, and Justin Dick. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance. The purpose of this special meeting tonight is to hear some Parks and Planning Development updates with no action requested of council this evening. Following each presentation, there will be an opportunity for public comment. If you'd like to speak, you will need to complete a sign up form which is available on the table by the front door. And please hand that slip to the clerk in the front right of the room. If you're on Zoom, you'll welcome, you are welcome to raise your hand at the appropriate time. And the clerk will call on you to speak. First, we'll have an update on the Little Sand Creek Watershed Recreation Plan. I'll now yield the floor to Parks and Planning Development Manager, Maeve Lannister.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I appreciate your time tonight. I know this is a special meeting and I, I'm so grateful that you all are out and everyone from the public. So, thank you. I'm gonna switch my screen over and share. Actually, Betsy, are you able to share your screen? Because I'm gonna have to reload this because it didn't transfer over. So I guess we'll just back up and we'll switch screens over to Betsy and let her share her screen. So tonight, we have the first presentation is going to be about the update on the Little Sand Creek Watershed. As we've all been working with Betsy Byrne and Leah Manchabelli, Manchabelli, Leah, I don't know how to say your last name. I'm so sorry. From Imba and Betsy is from the National Park Service Rivers. We've been working on this project since early last spring, I think about June was when we really kicked it all off with some site visits and Betsy came to town. We've conducted a number of meetings. We've also conducted a survey. We've been working with all the different landowners. As you may recall, it's an 8,000 acre parcel of land. The city is the majority landowner. We own just shy of 5,000 acres. The other major landowners are Schweitzer Ski Resort, the Bureau of Land Management, the Idaho Department of Lands, the National, the Forest Service. And I think that's everybody. And we've been collaborating with each of those landowners, which is pretty monumental to get the main landowners in the room and then try to figure out how to connect trails and other recreation on the land. In addition, we've been working with various community members and, and having focused group listening sessions. And filtering through all of that. So this first part of this presentation, this whole presentation is going to be about 20 minutes or so. We've broken it out where Betsy's gonna go through all of the information that we've gathered today and give you a summary to catch you up to date on it. So for some of you, we've been working with you closely and we've had really intimate conversations. So you're, so some of this information might be new. And some of it might be repeated for some of you, but for the majority in the public at large, we wanted to give you the full overview of where we are to catch you up to date. The second part of the presentation, we'll dive into the trails portion, and that's going to be Leah from Imba, and she's going to talk specifically about the trails component, which is essentially a subset of the overall recreation plan. And then we'll conclude with, I'm going to talk to you about the draft master plan and the outline, and then what the next steps are. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Betsy. And Betsy, yep, you're unmuted. We can see your screen. So, welcome.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Okay, sound check?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Thanks, everybody. Hi, I'm, as Maeve said, I'm Betsy Byrne. I'm with the National Park Service Rivers Trails and Conservation Assistance Program. And I'm providing backup to Maeve on this. We're working together as sort of the, the people leading this project. And I'm going to talk, first of all, just about our process and what we've been doing, like Maeve said, since June of last year. We wanted to show our work so you kind of knew where we're, where we're coming from and where we're going. And to, to start with that, I'm going to start with who we've talked to and Maeve has kind of given a little bit of an overview of that so far, but we have our planning team, that's, that's Maeve and myself, and Greg Lanning has been involved all the way along. We have our technical experts and, and you know, Leah is representing Imba here today. She's been really leading all of that trail work. Wes and Mike have been helping her out. And the landowners, we've got that list there and Maeve, Maeve mentioned them a little bit ago, but also want to shout out all of the stakeholders that we've talked to over the last half year, three quarters of a year. And we've talked to, you know, definitely P.O.P. Pendler's, we've talked to the Sandpoint Nordic Club, Kinnick's Land Trust, the Kalispel Tribe. We've had people just from the general public. We've had people representing, you know, conservation interests and wildlife interests and berry pickers and you know, this, just the general community. So we've really had a lot of community involvement and that's been, that's been really great because it really, there's a lot of knowledge and helps us understand the interests and the concerns that people have about recreation in the watershed. And just as, just as a sort of big overview, I think you all know this, but the reason why we're doing this is the Little Sand Creek Watershed Management Plan was completed a couple of years ago. Oh, it's January 2021, so just two years ago. And the primary goal of that plan is to protect the, the drinking water of the city of Sandpoint. But there is a secondary goal there, and that is to provide opportunities for compatible uses like recreation. And the watershed plan specifically calls out the need for a recreation plan that's based on public engagement and that kind of lays out a long-term vision and locations for recreation in the watershed for the long term. So that's, that's, that's sort of our why we're all doing this, our mandate in the, the first part. And when we were kicking this off in June, we, we kind of wanted to lay a foundation for why this matters, why, you know, what people's values were, what their concerns were, what their, their big picture vision was for the watershed. And we had this stakeholder meeting, and I think some of you were, were there at this, this meeting and we asked, you know, what is, what is important to you about the watershed? And we heard things about water quality, about access, recreational access, but just kind of general access to the watershed. We heard concerns about flora and fauna, nature, that people really, you know, valued that about the watershed. Health, fuels management, that kind of thing. And we also talked about what people were concerned about, especially when it comes to, you know, recreation in the watershed. And we heard things about overuse and overdevelopment and how some of that might lead to things like erosion. People were concerned about loss or lack of access. People were concerned about that, you know, protection of wildlife and the environment or the loss of quiet areas. So people really understood that there are, there can be some real impacts to recreation and, but there is an interest of sort of balancing, you know, that the recreational use with, you know, some of the things that we want to protect, like drinking water and, and wildlife and, and the environment. So those were some of the big things that we heard that were, were really helpful to help us craft kind of a, a vision and guiding principles that would help us as we were moving through the planning process. And this is the, the vision that we kind of crafted from hearing from people at that stakeholder meeting, which is the Little Sand Creek Watershed maintains high-quality drinking water while providing a quality recreation experience that is in harmony with wildlife and the natural setting. And then sort of a subset there, some guiding principles. And those guiding principles were, you know, maintain the quality of sand points, drinking water. That's obviously very important. But ensure inclusive access to nature and recreation for all. Respect the flora, fauna, and natural characteristics of the watershed. Protect public health and safety. And create opportunities to learn about and take care of the watershed. And this vision and guiding principles have really been our foundation as we've, as we've been moving through this, and we will continue to keep that as, as our sort of guiding light as we develop the recommendations and finalize the plan. And we also use that as a kind of a jumping off point to go to the public and hear more about sort of what they thought about recreation in the watershed. And we had a kind of a number of opportunities for, for input and feedback. We had a little cluster of things in October when, when Leah and Imba were in town, you know, that we had a, that's when we launched our public survey. We had a broad public open house that was just sort of in general about the recreation plan. And then we had a trails-focused open house at Matchwood Brewery. That was Imba and P.O.P. put that together and it was like really well-attended. It was so great to see so many members of the community come out to that. Really honestly, one of the better open houses I've ever been to. So, good job, guys. And after that, we kind of did a, a sort of series of like focus groups, one-on-one conversations, stakeholder conversations, things like that to kind of gather more input in particular areas where we, we felt like we needed more information. As for the survey, we don't, I'm not going to go through the whole, all of the survey results because it, it's, it's, there's a lot. If you're interested, we can absolutely provide you with an unedited version of the, of the survey results. But I did want to kind of show a couple of things to kind of, because we did learn a lot from that survey and one is just what are the types of recreational activities that people are, are doing in the watershed? And they were allowed to select multiple, and you know, a lot of people do multiple kinds of recreation. So, you know, hiking is number one. Followed by mountain biking and then berry picking and foraging. And I think a lot of people berry pick while they're hiking or mountain biking. So all of this kind of, you know, there's a lot of use there. We did hear about some winter sports. We heard nature walks, wildlife, bird viewing, photography, those kind of more passive recreation type activities. And then just, you know, you know, some others on down the line there. And that really helps us understand like what, what are we planning for? What are we trying to, you know, accommodate? We also asked people what their concerns were when it came to the watershed, like we asked our stakeholders and, and in a way it was testing what we heard from that smaller group of stakeholders. And we, we heard a lot of the same things. We heard about concerns about overuse. Too many people, we heard about, you know, people didn't want to degrade the water quality. That was really important. Conflicts between user groups, erosion, those, those sorts of things. So, you know, really, people have a really solid sense of what those concerns are and what we need to be careful of while we're, while we're planning for recreation. And we also asked what would most improve the recreational experience? And here we heard, you know, trail options to reduce user conflicts, trails that make loops, better trail heads, things like that, things that we are already kind of expecting to hear, but it was good to hear from the community. Those were important things. And, and, and I want to say some of these things are, you know, maybe lower down on the list of the public, but are things that we still want to tackle in the recreation plan, like, you know, maybe only 17% really cared about better wayfinding, but we know that that's a really important piece of a broader recreational picture. So we are gonna have some recommendations about, you know, wayfinding and informational signage, about education, about volunteer stewardship. So, you know, this, this helps us understand what the public really cares about and what's important to them, but there are other aspects that we're, we want to make sure we fold in there. So that was the general public survey, and this is the, the open house at Matchwood. And Imba had some really great boards there that were more specifically focused to the trail experience and understanding what kind of a trail experience people were looking for. And, and what we really heard there was that people just, you know, have a desire for a diverse trail system that meets, you know, the variety of skill levels and people of all abilities have a chance to recreate there. So we, we want to kind of try to accommodate multiple different kinds of skill levels within this, this trail system. And Leah will talk more about the trails in a minute. So she'll take a deeper dive. So after that, you know, that sort of survey and, and public outreach in October, we, we continued to have these meetings and focus group conversations. We met, you know, this picture on the, on the left there, that's the Sandpoint Nordic Club. That's actually when Imba was in town. We went up to look at, you know, some potential areas for maybe some, some winter recreation. We were talking to them about what, what their needs would be. We talked to the Kalispel Tribe, Idaho Fishing Game. We wanted to kind of understand what Idaho's, the fishing game office, you know, what they were doing in the area, what, what wildlife they might have information on or what hunting activity was going on. So they, they, they had some good information for us. We talked to the, the Highway District because, you know, obviously the Schweitzer Mountain Road, that was really important access point. We wanted to know what they were planning and what we could do within that right of way. Kinnick's Land Trust, we have a really passionate, enthusiastic working group on education that have been working on some things. So they've been really helpful. And finally, I just want to mention, you know, they may have mentioned this up top, that the coordination landowners has been really important over the last few months. You know, US Forest Service has been really great about working with P.O.P. and, and with the city about, you know, there's currently some trails that are on Forest Service land, but aren't officially part of their, their recreation plan or their travel management plan. And so Forest Service is like, yeah, let's work with you about, you know, bringing those existing trails and, and, and talking about some proposed future trails and, and bringing that into the Forest Service plan and, you know, figuring out if they need to do what kind of environmental analysis they might need to do on that. Schweitzer has also been really great, having some conversations with, with Lance and Sean about, you know, what the ski resort is doing. And I think you guys know there's that parcel of Schweitzer land that's at Switchback Five, and we're kind of talking about, you know, what are our options there? And, and basically they've, they've been open, like, let's have, let's continue these conversations. I don't think we've, we've landed on one specific thing yet, but we're, they're really open to conversations and have been good partners as we've moved through this. And also just the last one I want to mention there is the inland forest management where they're, they're not a landowner, but they manage the forest, they manage the, the, the tree harvesting on city property. And Mike Walcott is the, on the far right there, he's been a really great source of information for us. So we have, we've, we've had a lot of great people bringing us information, bringing us data or highlighting places where there are gaps in data or where we might still need to do some work. Like, I think we still need to do some work on gathering information on wildlife and wildlife movement in the area. But that really helps us craft these recommendations moving forward. And I think maybe we'll, we'll circle back to that later when Maeve talks about where we go from here. This is the, the timeline that we've been on, very just big, broad timeline, and we are sort of here to develop recommendations, but we've done our project setup, our inventory and assessment, our big community outreach chunk, and now we're in that, you know, taking all that information, synthesizing it, developing some recommendations, vetting those, and then we will go and craft our final recreation management plan. And like I said, we're going to talk about that more in, in the, in the future, in a little bit. But right now, I just want to see, are there any questions about our process? I kind of did a real fast overview. If you guys have any questions, like, you know, feel free to throw them at me.
Council? No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Great.
Excellent. Okay, we're gonna switch gears over to Leah and talk about their trail planning. Leah, we're gonna stop sharing our screen and turn it over to your screen.
Sounds fantastic. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great.
And Leah is coming to us from the field. She's on another project and she's been in the field all day working. So thank you all for your patience with our team. It's exciting to have people that are actually out doing the work. And so, thank you, Leah, for making this happen. I know you're in a different, different time zone and appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thanks for the intro. Yeah, coming to you guys live from Hot Springs, Arkansas. It's pretty warm here and I'm sad to be missing the snow that my home is getting. But, um, yeah, I'll introduce myself. My name is Leah Manchabelli. I work for Imba. I work for a program within, within Imba called Imba Trail Solutions. And our overall mission is to create, enhance, and protect great places to ride mountain bikes. Now, when I say that, I always like to add that we've learned over time that to accomplish that mission, we need to create a synergistic trail plan that always includes all users, because when all users are satisfied, it means that mountain bikers are satisfied too. So we may have mountain biking in our name, but inherent to the work that we do is comprehensive shared use planning as well. So a little bit about why trails are important and important to you all's community. Trails can support an active lifestyle. Access to trails makes for a desirable place to live and recreational amenities can increase community value. You know, across the country, there's precedence for communities using mountain biking to leverage development and be a catalyst for growth and positive change. Access to mountain biking is fundamental to a community's ability to grow its own unique lifestyle and culture. And I think that's alive and well in Sandpoint. There's a lot of movers and shakers, not only within, you know, P.O.P., the mountain biking organization, but I have just been so, so impressed with all of the stakeholder groups. We've had the privilege to talk to. Just got to give a shout out to the Nordic Club. We, we got to interact with them quite a bit in, in the field and then after, as we've gone through the analysis process and it's, it really is a privilege to work with your community. So, thank you. And then finally, trails and outdoor recreation are vital elements to transforming your community into a place where people want to live, work, and play. So you can raise a family here and you're, hopefully your kids have something they want to stay, stick around and, and use over time and build their own families here as well. So Betsy did an excellent job kind of talking about our process and analysis, and I don't want to eat up too much of our time talking about that again. But I wanted to share with you, these are the board, boards that you saw in, in Betsy's photos that you all were responding to at Matchwood Brewery. We took these boards and we processed the more trail-focused public feedback into, is this bar in the way for you all or is that just in the way for me?
Looks good.
Okay, great. We processed it into metrics about difficulty and trail style that helped serve as guiding principles for how we were thinking about our trail design or our trail concept plan. So what our summary really illustrates here is that you all are looking for a more diverse difficulty experience in your trails. The trail experience right now in the Lower Basin could be described as relatively homogeneous, and that may be due to their legacy nature. And so what we'd like to do is come together, that's what planning will accomplish, is diversifying the experience both in, both in difficulty, which will translate to equity in the access to the trails, which is a goal that Betsy mentioned previously. And then also exploring how do we diversify the user sets that get to recreate in the watershed? So we heard specific feedback about things like traditional shared use single track. And what that looks like typically is kind of what it sounds like. Trails that accommodate multiple users at multiple speeds, enjoying nature in multiple ways. We heard feedback about mountain bike optimized trails. Again, relatively intuitive, these trails are optimized to benefit the mountain biking experience. Gravity trails, this is a specific mountain bike optimized trail that relates to their downhill nature. And this is the style of trail that we heard time and time again, both in the public feedback and then also from users on the trails themselves that they were looking for. Hiking trails, more access deeper into the watershed is something we heard, and then Nordic or winter use trails as well. Some of you have seen these iterative slides. I think there's many stakeholders in the room. So I'll take you through some of our analysis and how we're thinking about the site. So this is Little Sand Creek Watershed. We have Little Sand Creek and then Schweitzer Mountain Road, Pop Point, and then Schweitzer Ski Resort. We've separated it into two main zones that inform our thinking and then also there is a higher granularity to the design or in planning of the trails in the Lower Basin as compared to the Upper Basin. And that has a lot to do with phasing of implementation. We took a look at land ownership and Betsy did a, Betsy and Maeve both did a great job explaining all of the different land ownership in the watershed and how those relationships are going to be so critical to the success of this project over time. We took a look at forestry activity, which is a use within the watershed. We took a look at the terrain. That's how we start to understand what trails may be most minimal and what areas and what zones. We took a look at existing trail use patterns. And how those use patterns can be interpreted for circulation and typology, so mountain bike trails versus shared use. And finally, we started to think about and make decisions around our key access points. Once we have those set, we can start to think about how the trails move through space. The blue trailhead symbols here illustrate existing assessed trail access points. So these are places that users are already accessing the watershed from. Conceptual assessed trail access points are represented in orange here, and these are just sites that we took a look at with our stakeholders and with our land managers to, while we were in the field, to make decisions around whether or not they would be successful for the overall trail plan. We ultimately decided that Switchback Five would be a great site because of a number of factors. Namely, its mid-mountain connectivity to the Upper Basin, its beginner and intermediate level access point, and its sustainability and proximity to the Little Sand Creek, and then its ingress and egress safety from Schweitzer Mountain Road. So we don't know what that intervention will look like. That is not a part, that is not a part of this scoping effort. But it does help us make a decision to pursue that relationship and what that looks like moving forward as that is Schweitzer property. And we had a great stakeholder meeting with them just a few weeks back to talk about that as well. This plan won't only target Switchback Five though. It also comes with recommendations for other existing and assessed trail access points, particularly at the roundabout and Switchback Two. So moving into the results of that analysis, we start with zone-based. And I don't, I can't get into the weeds of that in the short period of time that we have tonight, but Maeve, correct me if I'm wrong, but we decided that we would distribute my slides to whoever wanted them and they can reach out to me to dig more in depth as we track towards the final deliverables. Is that true?
Yes, that's correct. I think we'll probably filter that through me and then I'll, I'll manage anyone that wants to have the slides.
That sounds great. Awesome. So a little bit about our process. When we're doing onset planning, which is what we're doing for the watershed here, we start by thinking about place in zones. So I took you through the existing conditions that we're considering, and that helps us break the site up into process, processable chunks. And those chunks influence what styles of trail, how much trail, the trail difficulty that goes into a zone. And what then we do from there is we will start to put onto a map lines that illustrate corridors that could be trails in the future. These are not shovel-ready trails by any means. Concept always leads to design, which sometimes leads to construction. These trails will need to be thoroughly vetted and talked about with our land managers, our partners, and their alignments are very if not certainly will change over time. But this serves to start the conversation and start the conversation in, in an intelligent way, because these plans, these trails have been plotted with industry standards in mind, and then also the goals and objectives of your community. And so it's a starting point and it will surely change, and we're hoping that it serves as a great catalyst for conversation to track towards implementation. Just a summary of what all of that looks like. I know that it's probably incredibly difficult to read such a dense trail plan on a big screen. We, right now, are showing a total proposed conceptual mile of 43.9, so 44 miles. We right now are showing a total proposed conceptual mile of forty three point nine, so forty four miles of trail. Now that also will include some proposed decommissioning of trails that currently do not serve the overall objectives of the watershed. Namely, water quality. There is, we are proposing eighteen point nine miles of black or more difficult trail, sixteen point three miles of blue or intermediate trail, and eight point seven miles of green or beginner trail. This black member is highly skewed by a larger trail objective that is a later phase. Is within the later phase and that's the shared use, what we've been calling watershed crest trail. So another metric to just show you really quickly is the distribution of miles by trail difficulty and planned user. We have roughly ten miles of bike only trail. This is dictated by directionality to help manage users and user conflict. We have a new proposed mileage of nearly eight miles for hiker only trails. But the bulk of our proposed conceptual trail lives within the shared pedestrian. So hiker, biker, and a myriad of other uses that could be appropriate on those trails. Again, all of that adding up to around forty four miles. If anyone has questions, again, I'm sure that you have lots of them that pertain to the details of this plan. And that will, that is more appropriate for another meeting, but I'm happy to field them at any point. So we'll go through Maeve and we'll filter through Maeve. But that is proof of life and proof of work from our end on the trails plan.
Leah, thank you. I do, I do have a question. If you can go back a handful of slides to the slide that showed the potential access points. And you had mentioned Switchback Five. You'd mentioned the, the water treatment plant, or there was a star down there. There we go. Thank you. And then there's a star, it's Switchback Six, but you said the roundabout, which is beyond Switchback Seven. So I just want a clarity on that. It is Switchback Six or it is the roundabout?
It is the roundabout. Good catch. I just have an error on my slide here.
Okay, yeah, that makes more sense. And then I'm curious about the water treatment plant, how, why that was chosen? Because I know it's really tight down there in terms of space and it's obviously, you know, right on top of the water there. Can you talk a little bit about why that, why that site was chosen? I mean, obviously it's, it's, it's at the bottom, but can you speak a little bit more to that, please?
Yeah, apologies again. That is a map shift error. The star represents improvements happening at Switchback Two. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your attention to detail though. And I think it is important maybe to talk a little bit more. Switchback Two serves the lowest point for trail access because of terrain constraints. Beyond, and when we think about trail access and trail heads, particularly for parking, it's better, it's best served at the low point. I think all of us are very intimately aware of how dangerous and constrained Switchback Two is as well. But I do believe that there are traffic calming and other methods that we can use to make that a more amenable supplementary trailhead that will overall serve the watershed well in combination with the roundabout and Switchback Five. And again, I apologize for the lack of clarity on this slide.
No worries. Thank you. Counsel, any further questions?
I just, so I see the private, and this is just my ignorance, the private landowners. So is there any possible way that they can build on that property?
To build trail on private land?
Well, I, I don't know even trail or anything. I mean, that's what I'm asking. Land.
Yeah, that's a great question. So there's a couple of ways that could happen. Specifically at Switchback Five, we know that that private landowner is Schweitzer. And the majority of the private land ownership within the watershed is Schweitzer. And so that could get executed in a number of ways without getting in the weeds. It could look like an easement, but what it's going to look like right now is a conversation with them to further plan that out.
Thank you. Cause I saw those and thought, what if somebody wants to build a house there? What if they want to build something there?
Yeah.
Yeah, good question.
And I know it's not in Schweitzer's master plan to do any construction there.
Yeah.
The private property that you see along the southern border of the watershed, that is owned by other private entities. And it certainly is possible that somebody could build up on top of the ridge there.
Right.
Just FYI. Counsel, any further questions for Leah or for Maeve? Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Leah. If you want to shop, stop sharing, I'll switch up back over. And I think that's, that's going to work. Okay, so where do we go from here? So now essentially you've heard the overview, we've collected all the information. Now it's time to actually write this plan. And what does it look like? So again, refresher on the timeline, we are in the development of the recommendations phase. We are anticipating that we will be delivering a draft ninety percent plan this spring. And we would come forward with a request for approval. I imagine that we're going to have some sort of a draft workshop where we present the draft. And we work with our stakeholders on that, but we haven't quite formulated how that's going to look yet this spring. But we are, we're moving forward with that effort. We have identified that there is additional research that is needed. Fortunately, we have an opportunity to extend Betsy's contract potentially if it's approved through this next year. Which is fantastic because while we can still deliver the plan, we could make high level recommendations in those chapters that would then be backfilled with appendixes of that additional research and information, which that, that is what we are recommending that we do going forward, utilizing Betsy. Going forward, it sounds like Leah and Imba is going to be hired potentially to come and further develop the design of some of the trails in the lower basin. And then the Ponderay Peddlers are seeking funding to move forward on some of that work. So there's a couple of these sort of offshoots that are already starting to happen. The Forest Service is also moving ahead with the NEPA process. They have a parcel that's in the lower basin that has historical trails on there that I do believe some of you may have worked on back in the day. Long before there were any sanctioned trails or adopted trails. And we're taking a look at those as well as utilizing Imba's recommendations for further developing that parcel. We are actively working with the Forest Service and we are scheduled to meet with them and their cultural archaeologists, as well as their wildlife biologists coming up here in March. So we're kicking that process off simultaneously as we're developing these chapters. Additionally, we are working with Schweitzer very closely and they move just as fast as we do on different things. And everyone's really excited about the potential for not just Switchback Five, but what, what could the roundabout at the top of this, of the watershed look like? And how could that be developed into a bigger trailhead and more robust? So we're, we are, we being myself and Jennifer, we're looking at ways of how can we get some of these concepts developed? How can we design them? Is that something that I should do in-house? Or can I leverage some of the resources that we have in this community? I've already been working with this local school district and there is a high school design class that there's potentially utilized local students with my guidance. And we could have some concepts of what these trailheads could look like, what some of the viewing areas could be. In addition, we're working with the Kalispel tribe and potentially other tribes as well that were indigenous, indigenous to this area and historical land stewards who do have a desire to come back. And we're working with placemaking and cultural, cultural placemaking and naming and utilizing some of particularly the Salish language in some of this interpretive signage and some of the placemaking, as well as protecting any potential cultural areas that maybe aren't known to us. So we're just starting to unlock a lot of that information and that data that wasn't available during the original watershed management plan. And again, just to remind you, when that management plan was done, it was specifically for the property owned by the city. And we are looking at the collective, the entire watershed. So we're taking it bigger and broader specifically for the purposes of connecting some of these properties through trails. And with that comes, comes the protection as well. We are also, we have a very robust, strong educational team. They're working on their name right now, but it seems like this, this education group in the Kniqsu Land Trust is involved. We have several professors involved from the University of Idaho who work locally. We have local educators from the elementary, middle school and the high school right here. And there is going to be a big STEM science, technology, engineering camp this summer at the University of Idaho at the organic campus. And that's in June, June fourteenth and fifteenth are the dates of that camp. But it looks like we're targeting to have our, our plan done and roll out in some sort of a presentation during the evening of one of those nights. And so stay tuned for that, that looks like that's moving forward as well as utilizing some of the, the students in that program for data collection. One thing that's unique about that, about that, I'm just going to jump to there, save the date. What, one thing that's unique about that camp is that they're focusing on using drones and drone technology in science collection and data collection. So that, if you, if you think ahead to look backwards at this plan and what this product of the plan looks like, it's trending towards, we're going to have a multimedia plan. And so it's turned into being two parts. We will definitely have a booklet that you can print out and it will have, you know, a static book that you could carry around with the plans and everything. But it also looks like we're going to have an ArcGIS based story map. This is a technology, a multimedia technology where we will be able to input the, the maps and they'll be dynamic and you can zoom in. It also will have video. There may even be some interviews with people. Some of the historical and the cultural content that we're uncovering will be captured by our cities, by, by Heather Upton, our city's cultural and historical preservation officer. So there's just a lot of these dynamic things are happening. This plan has turned out to be much bigger than just a simple recreation plan. We have now ventured down the, the trail of what does it mean to merge conservation and recreation? Can, no, big question, can we turn recreationists into stewards of the land and be the leaders for conservation? How do we, how do we as a community want to move forward with protecting biodiversity and even enhancing it? So it's a huge balance here that we're trying to do and make these very, very responsible decisions and, and, and make these recommendations to you all to carry forward. So like I said, we're, we're diving into the recommendations now. So the next six weeks or so, that's going to be the majority of our focus. And then the trail portion is going to be a component to all of this. I just want to back up here, slide to the draft outline. So this might seem really simple, but each of these chapters are pretty robust. And this is very, very, very preliminary. We do have, some of them are already in the works and they're moving forward. But I wanted to share this with you and get this in front of you now. This is your first introductory, we will be emailing you this presentation. And I, I ask that you take a deep dive. And if there's any chapters that you think are missing, if there's any topics that you think we should include, please, no, let me know. I'm just going to go through this really quickly. So of course we have the general introduction, the background, all the, all the content of the process that you heard from Betsy. That's going to be digested and put into the document. Of course, our findings from all of our research, existing conditions, that's where we're still looking for more data, particularly around the wildlife, as you heard. And other critical, critical areas, not just from the natural resources, but also from the cultural side. So we're working on that. Recreational opportunities will be chapter four or somewhere in that area. And that's where you start to incorporate those zones. And that's what, what Leah was talking about with the high density trail areas and then the areas that we want to protect. And then the balancing of all that. And so that's where we will make those recommendations for the desired conditions. I anticipate that we will have some renderings to give you an idea of what a sample of a trail would look like in a section, what a potential trailhead would look like at different areas. So we're going to start to pull that content together now. And then we're going to dive into what's a limited or prohibited recreation and what would be required or what would require a permit or what would we absolutely not allow? And then education conservation activities, it's only one bullet right now, but that is actually quite robust. We've already, we have a draft that we've been reviewing and there's a lot in there so far. So that's really exciting because the big message is that a watershed is actually our outdoor classroom. It's right here. It's really important for rural educators to know that they have that as our resource. So it's not just about recreation anymore. We're talking about education and utilizing what we have here, this great asset and amenity for our classroom and for our children. And then how can we eventually through that education, create future stewards of this land? How can we get students to grow up, go off to college and study natural resources or recreation or landscape architecture? Or trail planning or any of the things that we all do and come back and live here? So how can we keep this life cycle going and be a sustainable community? And then of course, we're going to get into the details of the amenities, the signage and the wayfinding and all the kind of nitty gritty amenity. There wouldn't be a plan if we didn't talk about maintenance, of course. And there's lots of maintenance, maintenance topics under there. These are sort of the high level ones of the wildfire, the forestry mitigation. A lot of that is already covered in the management plan, but we're going to talk about specifically as it relates to recreation and the bigger, broader picture and the other landowners of invasive plant species, weed mitigation. And then finally monitoring, how do we know that we're successful? How is, what are the markers of success of this plan? And implementation strategies too, we're, we're missing that bullet. But so that's kind of the high level. So I want you, that's a lot we threw at you. I want you to digest this and I'll check back in with you. And if you have anything, let me know.
I have a question for you. One thing that kind of stands out for me there, and maybe this is more generally covered under the, the general watershed management plan. But public safety response seems like an important component that is, there's going to be some elements that are unique to the recreation part of the plan. So I think that needs to be included in there as well. I didn't mean interrupt if you still want.
No, that's great. So if you have any other questions or comments that come to mind, yeah, absolutely. Let, let me know. Like I said, we're just digesting this now and trying to get the structure and got plenty of time to give me feedback. So, and then the final, final slide, going back to save the date, I do want to put this out there to you all because we are targeting that we're going to have some sort of a presentation about this project and all the partnerships and everything in that, that window of June fourteenth to the sixteenth. So somewhere around there, I guess probably around, I think it's going to be midweek that we'll get some time in the afternoon or the evening to do a presentation. And it will be out at the University of Idaho organic campus, which ironically is at the bottom of the watershed. So pretty exciting. And we do anticipate that there'll be some water tours as well along the creek. And so I'll keep you posted on all of that, but that was our target. And then going forward, we, we anticipate that Betsy will be back this summer and she'll be, will be doing more deep dives. And we don't quite know what all that's going to look like yet, but hopefully we can make that all happen. And that's that with the watershed. So with that, I want to open it up again to questions and we can take questions if you want from the public or however you want.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I have a question and two comments. So is, are these trails going to be paid for by grants or?
It's going to be diversified funding and that's going to be one of the recommendations we're going to identify is various, various means and methods for funding.
Okay, because it's a lot of work that is going to be happening. My comments are that, one, I'm, you're going to decommission the social trails. I was worried about the social trails with people, you know, who, they kind of knew what they were doing, but not really have a lot of input. So, because I know social trails can sometimes be, cause problems and we don't want anybody to get hurt up there. And the second is, I'm really happy to see that inland forest management has the timber management plan. And I'm very proud to say that my husband has planted most of the trees up there over his lifetime as a forester. So, but good job. And we did, we had a study done by headwater economics, probably twenty seventeen, I can't remember. But trails have the capability of bringing fourteen million dollars a year into our community. So that's an amazing economic impact, which is trails.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, we have actually referenced that document and that is one of the appendixes of the watershed management plan.
Nice.
Yeah, it's an excellent, excellent document.
Counsel, any further questions or comments?
It was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maeve. Great presentation. And thank you, Betsy and Leah as well. Really appreciate it. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this matter? Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that concludes. Okay, that concludes that agenda item. We'll now have a general park projects update. And again, I'll yield the floor to Parks Planning and Development Manager Maeve Levens, Nevins Labtard, sorry.
Thank you, bye team. And I do want to give a plug, Imba just, they just published a blog post about this project. It just came out this past Thursday. So if you go to Imba's website, they have a blog and you can read more about it. And it talks about the project and different partnerships. So I'll show that in the link as well. Okay, moving on to the next project here. Projects, I should say. Okay, so. The first one I'm going to talk about tonight is Traverse Park. And I'm going to talk about Traverse just in general first. So I was hoping and we had really anticipated that we would be able to talk to you about the James E. Russell Sports Complex and Sports Center. That's again, just a reminder, it's the tennis and pickleball facility and the incredible donation that we received. We have had some challenges with the progress of the team and we have decided to cancel the contract with Emmerich Construction. And move forward with a different approach. We are very, very close, as in days away from what that next approach is going to be. Fortunately, we were able to retain our design team, our architects, ALSC and our landscape architects and our engineers. So it's really just, it's a little minor hiccup, I would say. It's not huge, we are still relatively on track. We are a couple of months behind the schedule, but a couple of months on the scale of magnitude of this project is, is really okay. To make a pivot like this. In addition, we are able to now enter into a direct contract with Dreamland. And Dreamland is the company that would be, or is going to be designing and building the skate park expansion. And we, I was just talking to them today and they are on track to build the, the skate park expansion. Based on the three hundred thousand dollars that we had allocated for that, they're on track to do that this fall. So they anticipate that they'll be here. And if there's additional funds raised, which as you probably have heard, that the Bonner County Skate Association has been raising funding. And there's been several fundraisers and there's another one coming up in March up on the mountain, they're doing a, a snow event. As that fundraising continues on, there may be an opportunity to do, to add to their contract to increase that. But for right now, we're focusing on what was the original scope and, and the schedule. And so they're on track. So I'm happy to report that about the skate park. As far as the contractor goes, we, the way that the contract was structured, we were able to. Go into another RFQ process, so it's another procurement process with new contractors. And the way that the law, the procurement law is such that we can go back to who, whoever contractors were a part of the original bidding process. If there were any that were interested. So there were two, which is great and they're both local. And so we are moving forward with a, an RFQ for that. And so we should have that, that contract figured out. So I imagine in early March, we should be able to come back with an update and we'll have a new schedule. And be able to hopefully at that time, show you the full concept for that phase one, which again is the building and the skate park and the Gateway Plaza.
Maeve, I just want to point out, I think it's important information for the public and the council that. We didn't end up incurring any cost from the failure of that original developer. Or contractor. So we ended up with, what is it, thirty percent design? With essentially a full refund of our, of our investment there. So you know, while we're back a couple of months and it is a bit of a hiccup, we actually came out ahead, so.
And for clarification too, Mr. Mayor. So our process forward will still be a design build process. And so there's several different models under design build. When we originally went out with this project, it was a traditional design build process. What we are pursuing right now through kind of a mini RFQ with two other local contractors who were initially interested in the project. Is it'll be a CMGC. So they'll be involved as a construction manager in the design. So we get the contractor that is involved initially in the design process, looking at how it'd be constructed, identifying subcontractors. And really looking at costs as we're in timelines as we are in the design phase. And then ultimately we'll make up for final costs. And final structure for actually moving into construction. So that's the way that it will work. In terms of a design. Coming back for the public is what we had planned through the design build process. We're probably not going to see that for, we're probably into like May before we're going to see that come back into council. So what had happened through this process is our design firm, when things kind of, there was a hiccup with this, it got put on hold. Our design firm reallocated people to other projects that were in the pipeline. So they're reassembling their design team and kind of picking up from where we were with schematic designs. So in terms of what the overall building looks like, height of building, those kinds of things, which. We've heard from the neighbors, community members really interested in seeing that. We don't have that at this point. So we kind of have a floor plan layout is where they had gotten to. And they had some initial concepts for what overall building would look like. But height was a significant point of discussion and bringing that down. So we just don't have that visual at this point. But with what Maeve will be showing you coming up, you'll see location for the building. So again, to confirm, and the intention and where we were with building and design is the existing four tennis courts will stay. This building will actually go adjacent to those four tennis courts. It will still be multipurpose with four tennis courts, multipurpose sixteen pickleball courts. Indoor, outdoor restrooms to serve the overall park. So that hasn't changed on where we have gotten through concept, but we've got to get through. This mini RFQ process and, and work through selection and negotiation with these teams. What council can expect, coming back to you in March relative to the sports complex building in particular. Is a contract with ALSC to continue forward their work. So that will be on your council agenda, most likely for your March fifteenth meeting. The direct contract with Dream Landscape Park, that will be on your council agenda, most likely for the March fifteenth meeting. And by March fifteenth, we should be at a point that the contractor coming on is also on the agenda as well. So that's kind of where we are with the process. And to the mayor's point with negotiation of termination of this contract. One of the things we were able to successfully negotiate when we terminated the contract is a full refund. So expenses incurred at the date were incurred by the contractor we originally had under contract. They reimbursed the city for all expenses paid to date. And so our, so our team now will be able to move forward. And we did obtain our geotechnical survey work that had been done, that is all there to be shared. So we'll reduce some of our costs moving forward with the project. But unfortunately has this behind timeline from what we anticipated originally.
However, yet again, staff makes lemonade out of these lemons. So I appreciate you guys working very hard to find the silver lining. I know that there's been a lot of comment and conversation about this project. Maybe this was an unintentional opportunity for all of us to kind of take a breath. Regather, regroup and succeed.
Thank you. Okay, so. With that, I didn't stop working during this whole time with Travers. And, and you saw me a few weeks ago and I was talking about the next phase of what we would be doing. And we had this opportunity called the Land Water Conservation Fund and it's a grant opportunity. And the last time I was here, I was updating you on potential scope of work for that grant. So this first part of this presentation, I'm going to dive into that. So just a reminder that this is the location of Travers on the screen, you can see on the left, that is Travers Park. Parcel of the original park. As a reminder, it was a dump site and back in nineteen eighty-six. The former park director also secured an LWCF grant and they did a lot of work there. So this boundary that you see is around the original Travers Park parcel. And since then, the city has acquired this parcel to the east, which you can see on the right-hand side. So now, first thing I need to do is we do the parcel boundaries for the park. So that's pretty exciting because it means that the park is actually, it's grown over the decades. And the area that we're going to be focusing on for the LWCF grant application is the playground. So here's the new boundary with the, the actual two parcels combined. Refresher, this is the master plan that was adopted in two thousand and twenty. And you can see the existing, it's skewed, it's, it's not facing north or south, it's a little bit skewed. But the, for, for point of reference, here's the, the skate park and that's the full build out if it was envisioned as it was back then. And then the courts are, are your landmark, so they're going to stay put. And then the bike skills course is just north to that, the playground would be to the west. And then these would be future courts and then the fields. This concept does show Centennial in, in there, but we're only talking about everything south of Centennial property. So the outreach, you've been a part of this for years long before me and thank you for your patience with this project. Like all great things, they take a, a long time, but when they finally get rolling, it's going to be magnificent. And so we are in the deep dive of what could this project be? And what, how can we get it done? So you know, I, I'm focused on how can we implement, how can we trace money and, and track down some more funds? And how can we leverage some of these partnerships and donations to grow, grow our funding so we can realize our dream? The public outreach started back in twenty, I think twenty eighteen and there was a robust outreach process. Over seventeen meetings were held, which is a magnificent amount for any sort of project, let alone a master plan. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, if you recall, we were pursuing the lots, lot tax. And I did walking tours, there was a focus on this park particularly. We did several workshops about the Parks and Rec Master Plan and Travers was part of that conversation in those workshops. And then we, we conducted a survey and we had public meetings. And then just this past fall, I picked it back up again as we started to pursue grant. And we had an open house on January fifth and we had about sixty-five people come, which was pretty good for a January holiday evening. And that's where we looked at these boards down here, we were looking at the fields, we were looking at the parking, we're looking at the playground. And then we also conducted a survey recently over the fall and we were able to get some feedback. This fall, I've been to three public meetings, I mean, three city council meetings and have been updating the community all along. So in front of you on the screen now, this is the revised master plan, I'm going to call it master plan two point O. So this is where now we've incorporated the building and you can see the building footprint with the four courts, that's the phase one building. The existing tennis courts are going to stay. We did a geotechnical analysis of the site and it turned out that the original site where the, where the courts were. They, there's ten feet of organics under there. And so it's not really a good place to build the building because you'd have to dig all of that out and it would cost an exuberant amount. And so the architects, before we even talked about what the public wanted, the architects came to us and they said, you know, the geotech is pointing in this direction. And this site right here doesn't have any problems with it, it's a great site, it's clean, there's no signs of any, any problems with the soil. And it's also higher in elevation, so it wouldn't have the drainage problems. What do you think about this site? Well, simultaneously this summer, we had been talking to the tennis community and the tennis community really, really loves those outdoor courts. And if we could provide and keep those courts as well as, as providing the indoor courts, that would give us eight total tennis courts at this park. And it would offer enough courts right there so we could have a huge tournament. And by huge tournament, Jason, which one is it? It's the championships, I think? Twenty twenty-four, high school?
The district's district tournament in twenty twenty-four will be with, with the rotation will be.
Yeah.
Should be here in San.
So that's tremendous to be able to bring that level of athleticism here in twenty twenty-four. So that gives us a really big target and all be able to be held right here at Traverse. So in addition, you know, the skate park, we still don't know what the design is, but now we're going to, we're going to see that soon from Dreamland. But that's the general area in purple. The parking lot, so we have the existing parking lot, which we know needs to get reconfigured. It is failing and I think I've made my case about the failure and how we could optimize it. And then with the expanded parking lot, you can see the full footprint and then the maintenance building would get relocated to the west. You can see the area right here, that's the playground and the playground connects to the plaza, that's going to be part of phase one. Behind it is potential, it's just an open field right now, but if we were to ever have a second building, that would be a good site for it, it's a level site. Also, the geotech came back and it's clean. So that would be a great site if we were to say have indoor volleyball or, and basketball or something like that. But at this time, that's, that's a long ways out and we're not, we don't have any funding for anything like that. Now the fields, we've reconfigured the fields, we, we did receive quite a bit of feedback. This is again, still conceptual and we don't have any money for either the parking lot or the fields. So I just want to tell everybody, we're still taking feedback. And we know that things may change in the future and we know that Centennial may change. And by the time we go get into building out the fields and the parking lots, we might have new fields over in Ponderay that could change all of this. So this is still in flux. I wouldn't say it's a full-blown cartoon because now we have actually, we've, we've really field fit this and fitted in with the survey. And we believe this is what we could build and, and one option, but I just want to be really clear that we're still in concept. And then you can see the bike skills course with a pump track, that's just also a concept, it's a placeholder. But the bike community and the skate community or the all-wheel community has, they have a desire for a hard surface over there. So for the purposes of the grant, I've decided to move forward with the playground. And the playground is not just a playground. So to start with, these are the existing conditions. The existing playground was built about twelve years ago, twelve, twelve to fifteen years ago. And it was the very first ADA accessible playground in Sandpoint. And since then, standards have changed and the equipment is starting to, to wear and tear. And also the, the ground all around it is starting to settle out. And so we're seeing the access route is no longer accessible. And that's what you see in these pictures, you can see the disintegration of the concrete and the settling. So no longer is it safe for really anybody to walk through there with the separation of the, the area. Also, the standards for accessible playgrounds no longer do, we make recommendations for the wood fiber safety surfacing. And that's what you see here, that's the material. It does have, it is, it is still safe and it can take impacts from falls. But if you think about it, if you have a wheelchair or you, you're using a cane or even crutches. If you put it into all of that wood fiber, you just sink down and it's very uneven and it's really difficult to get around. So now the recommendations are, and in all, in all of my recent work, we've been really emphasizing to use a, a, a uniform safety surfacing. So that would be a rubber tile or an artificial turf or, or some sort of a port-in-place rubber material. So it's uniform, so you can't get, get trapped. And also now we look at all different kinds of abilities or disabilities, however you want to think of it. I think of it as superpowers. So everyone has their own superpowers and a lot of them are invisible, particularly kids with, on the autism spectrum or any sort of sensory disorder, ADHD. There's all these ones that you can't see, they're invisible. As well as the caretakers, caretakers are often the grandparents or elderly community members. And so they need to be able to get into the playground. So just starting off the bat, this playground needs an update to be able to be considered accessible. So we'll just start there. Second to that, with the new footprint of the, the building, the building would go on top of the playground. And the building is on schedule to be done by the spring of two thousand and twenty-four. So we would have to relocate that playground. Third, in the park master plan, the community asked specifically for a splash pad. And the splash pad is perfect for the site because this is the site where the playground would go in the footprint. And um the splash pad is perfect for the site because this is the site where the playground would go in the footprint. The whole idea and the theme of the building and the gateway plaza was all about the Sandpoint stories and the McManus books. And the connection of the donor, Mr. Russell, to the Patrick McManus stories. Um. If you recall, we had two donations of art sculptures and that's what you see here, we have these bronze sculptures. Um. These are gonna be delivered this summer, one is a bear and one is the cougar and her cub. And those were selected specifically for their relationship to the Patrick McManus stories, um so they're gonna be incorporated in this playground. Now, again, we're still in concept world, so these are just high-level designs. And if we get the funding from the LWCF grant, then we will move into design and we will work with the community, we're gonna work with the kids. I have a whole group of people with different superpowers and abilities that I'll be working with to make sure that. The layout, the spacing is all appropriate and we're we're really dialing this in. But right now, we have the splash pad shown that it flows through the site and it connects to the drainage and the landscaping. So essentially, the water is flowing through the site. These are again, are just concept renderings of what the equipment could look like, but we've talked about having an authentic Sandpoint house. With the architecture detailing that we see locally and then putting the bear in the attic, which is actually one of Patrick McManus's books. And so the bear in the attic would be seen from the backside as a sculpture, but if you're a child in the playground, you could interact and it would actually be a play feature. Um. And then the cougar and the cub would be integrated into the landscape. Um. Standpoint is all about natural features, timbers, logs, um stone and climbing. Or all kinds of things that they like to do here. Um. So we would be reinterpreting that within the playground. Um. And then into the woods is what another theme that we've been talking about. And how do you go into the the woods and the movement and all the different options here? So you can, we're starting to develop these little outdoor rooms. Um. And then, of course, the the concept of the water play. Now, you know, I don't have children, so I tell everybody, have you ever had a business meeting at a playground? Or gone to a playground for lunch with your friends? I mean, that is my recommendation, if you don't have kids, or even if you do have kids, to start to think about this beyond a playground. This is not just a playground, this is our new front door for the park. This is going to be the landscaping that grows here natively, it's gonna be um flowing through our our park. It's gonna be flowing through our town, but it's gonna be throw flowing through our community as the hub. This is gonna become the place where we want to go and want to gather, doesn't matter how old you are, doesn't matter what your ability is. This is going to be an outdoor classroom, a plaza, it's gonna have all those things. So just throw out the term playground and let's just call it the front door. Okay, so who are our users? This picture right here, this is actually my friend Bree that I met at um one of our other parks. And you can see she's trying to get to her family, she has a toddler who's in the playground and her husband, and she's in a wheelchair, she can't get there because of that surfacing. So I use this to to reinforce the point that it's very difficult to navigate a playground that is not inclusive. Um. And then some of the the facts, you know, we have twenty-five hundred kids who are under the age of eighteen. So they're gonna directly benefit from this. Um. Traverse Park has so much going on there and it's the one-stop park for all users. Um. And then it's really important to point out that of the statistics that we know, this is the known data. That eleven point two percent of people under the age of sixty-five in Sandpoint are disabled. That doesn't include anybody over sixty-five and we all know that one in four seniors does become disabled. So um and we're talking about access right there and mobility disabilities, but again, that's not including all the other abilities or superpowers. Um. And then other things to talk about Traverse, um you know, we have nine schools and seven assisted. Living care facilities within one and a half mile radius of this park. So that means they should be able to ride or walk, um ride their bikes or or walk there. Um. And um almost thirty-two percent or thirty-one point two percent of the local students are living below the poverty level. So um you know, if you start to think about this and why this park is so important, kids are coming here. Um. There's maybe opportunity for some living great, living landscapes, um there is a community garden really close by. You know, there's just ways to start thinking about these parks beyond just a playground or a ball field. These are community resources, they improve your health and um the wellness of the community. So I just kind of ran through all of the public benefits. Um. It's going to have the splash pad accessible, the walkways will be improved. All that good stuff. Um. So the budget, so this is the nitty-gritty. Um. We, the total budget for this project is about one point one two two million. Um. We've asked for fifty percent from the LWCF grant, so five hundred and sixty-one thousand is what we're asking for. And we have the funding in hand to match that. I have scraped all the pots, or I should say Jennifer and Sarah have scraped all the pots for us. Um. And this is, this is one of my highest priorities is to see this project through.
Maeve, can I comment on that? Um. As the council will recall, I think it was a month or so ago when you introduced the. Land and Water Conservation Grant before this body. And at that time, the proposal was to spend uh that money on um upgrading the parking lot. And and some other sort of preliminary upgrades that would um get us part of the way uh towards accomplishing this playground. Um. And as you recall, there was significant public uh comment and concern that that we would be spending this kind of money. And basically, from the public's perspective, end up with what we have now, right? With a little bit better parking and we still don't have a really an a an improved uh playground area. Um. There there's no really uh, you know, obvious new benefit for the public. So um after that meeting, I directed staff to um reallocate uh that that grant. Uh towards this effort uh with the idea that um we could accomplish the splash pad playground with this grant. And then um, you know, we can worry about the parking lot later. Um. But but then I think the public would feel a lot more comfortable knowing, you know, seeing and and being able to experience. That we actually have a a new benefit, a a new, a new experience that's available at the park that that wasn't there before. Um. And as Maeve pointed out, um the the idea of an amenity of a public um of a splash pad at Traverse Park. It came scored really high in the um Park Master Plan Survey, um that was clearly something that was really desired by the public. So I thought that this reallocation of the grant and and city funds would be a a good idea. And so um Maeve has um uh redirected uh this grant as as she's presented before you. And um and I think uh that this is a much better use of of funds.
That's wonderful. Uh. On behalf of my one-year-old granddaughter, she thanks you for real allocating and instead of parking lot splash pad. She thanks you.
Um. So I I do want to point out, um there's this general rule of thumb about um the cost benefit of a project, particularly playgrounds. And um the general rule of thumb in the park development world is that it should be, you should be spending as a community about a thousand dollars per child. On on these and and these facilities. And with our population being around nine thousand and about twenty-five hundred of those are are under eighteen. Um. Our development value should be around two point five million. So just to put it in context of, you know, we are in alignment with current practices. Um. And we do already have our budget for maintenance, um we don't anticipate much of a increase in that. Um. If anything, with the new design, we'll have reduced maintenance. Um. And if it's not funded in this round, um we will phase the development. So this project is still gonna move forward and it would be phased and we do have a way to break it out into different phases. So um, that's what you see here. I do want to point out, there is an additional um grant out there that we are just beginning to pursue. Um. Through the forestry realm and that would increase our urban forestry camp as well as increase our landscaping. So um stay tuned on that, we're just getting information back from the feds. But at the federal level, one point five billion dollars has been re- re- has been released to the states. And the state is deciding right now how it's gonna distribute the funding. Standpoint is uniquely qualified, we will not have to come up with a match for that. Um. And we have already submitted interest in this grant and given them some shovel-ready projects and scoped it out. So I've been working on that simultaneously to this project. But what it means is that where that playground is, it's on the south side of the park and where the building is in the parking lot, it's gonna be a heat island. And so we'll be able to come in with the, hopefully with the trees and the and and revegetate all of that in a much more prolific um forest in that area. So I, you're not seeing the landscape plan here, but I do want to speak to that.
How is it they were uniquely qualified?
They consider us disadvantaged because we are rural. In our population, yep. Which hopefully it all works out, we got that money. Um. It would also mean we can maintain our trees, so yeah, we'll, we'll be talking about that more as that grant develops. Okay, so I'm gonna bring, I'm gonna invite Jason up um to talk about the tennis and pickleball court um renovations. We are, because we are, we're doing all this work, we're triggering um impacts to tennis and pickleball. And we are um essentially looking at refurbishing existing courts that we have, um keeping in mind that this is a short-term. Um. Solutions to a bigger project that we're looking at over the long term.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question before you leave, Maeve. Um. Do you have an idea what the timeframe is for that LWCF grant? And how does the um playground improvement fit with phase one in terms of timing and construction coordination? Are are these expected to be delivered around the same time next year?
Yeah, great question, Jason. Um councillor Jason Walker, sorry. Um. The uh. Phase one building, gateway and skate park are all gonna be starting construction this summer in twenty twenty-three. And then it will roll into the spring of twenty twenty-four. My understanding with um the grant, the LWCF grant, is that we will find out in around July or August if we qualify. But then it goes to the feds and there's a number of nuanced um grant processes in there. And the funding may not be distributed until the fall, possibly even into the winter of of this fall, so into twenty twenty-four. Which means we couldn't start construction until this spring. Um. But if we get word in July that we're gonna, that we qualify, I I imagine that I'll, you know, at that point, I'll look at moving into design. Because some of the matching portion of that money can qualify, so I could move into construction docu- documents. So then that way we could go to bid this winter and then we could, you know, procure and purchase the equipment and build it in the spring um and summer of twenty twenty-four. So in my mind, we're gonna have the building done around March, um and that will be done. The landscape will be getting finished into the spring of twenty twenty-four and the playground will then start. Um. And then hopefully I'll be hopefully going after more funding so I can start. The next phase would be to move into the parking and the fields.
Okay.
So we're gonna be under construction for a couple of years. But it'll be worth it. Okay, Jason.
I don't need a lot of slits. Evening, guys, thanks. Um. So as as we kind of talk about here, you know, we're looking at our existing court facilities as well. Um. We don't have money or budget set up for it yet, but it's it's something we need to look at, Traverse is in need of some maintenance. Um. We've got a crack on that, thanks to the organic materials underneath. Uh. Lakeview was redone, in my mind, it was redone a few years ago, it was done quite a while ago when we got that grant and redid that. Um. It needs some TLC as well. Um. And then last but not least, um pickleball is a growing sport in the community, it's rolling up. Um. They now have three courts which are located at Lakeview Park. Um. But that's getting to the point where those courts are super busy, if you've ever been down there in the morning, there's anywhere from twenty-five to forty people down there trying to play pickleball. Um. So looking at expanding um those offerings and ability or access for the pickleball community. Um. We identified City Beach as the location to add additional stripes to make that a multi-use facility. We're also looking at expanding, in the past, we've offered some pickleball classes through Parks and Rec. We um had a meeting recently with my instructor, we're going to expand our offerings. But in order to expand our offerings and take up that court time right now, we've got also have an alternative place for the public to go. While we eat eat up some of that court time for, because I reserve it for my program, so I kick everybody off. Um. City Beach is identified as the location because it is the least heavily programmed of all the facilities. Traverse is relatively heavily programmed and heavily used. Um. I use Lakeview Park for my lesson venue, um which pretty much eats up the peak times at that facility as well. With lessons running in the morning for youth and then lessons and leaf flow in the evenings um for adults. So um City Beach is being identified as it's the least programmed, it's used in the evenings for our doubles league. Um. There's a lot of free play and a lot of open play, but it's the least scheduled. Um. Will this create, you know, we're gonna have to manage the two different user groups, yes. Um. But I think it's quite manageable and it's what's needed to get get more access out there. So that's where we are with that, we're currently trying to get um some bids out and get some information back on what it's gonna cost to get the six courts put on there.
Mr. Mayor, question. To that end, the good job, I don't know how many people are aware of how big of a sport pickleball is. And how incredibly competitive some of these uh wide age groups. Like some of these folks that you would think are about ready to be in the twilight are finding a, it's encouraging to me. Cause I'm looking for a a sport and a hobby and holy cow. So good job uh kind of isolating this and looking at where um this definitely is going to be one of those. You build it and they will come because they are here for sure, so very good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Jason, will you be offering youth pickleball?
Actually, yes, we're looking at putting together a youth camp later in the summer, so we're working on those dates right now.
Awesome.
Alright.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We're getting to the end. Okay, so that includes Traverse. Um. Did you, did anyone have any questions about Traverse before? Okay, so now moving on to the Sand Creek Boat, Sand Creek Water Trail and Non-Motorized Boat Launch. Um. This was a project that was identified um last uh spring and we have a budget of twenty-five thousand. Um. I've used a portion of that funding to complete the site survey. Um. The site for this is located at the visitor center or chamber of commerce. And so will they come into your neighborhood, Kate?
I won't get any work done, but okay.
Um. This is very, very preliminarily um in highest level of of concept design. Um. I haven't really wrapped my head around it yet because I don't have funding for it. Um. And we just got the survey just last week, so I haven't digested the grade change yet. But the idea is to have an ADA accessible, non-motorized boat launch, um and other site improvements, potentially um a bathroom and other access. Um. At that area. Um. In addition, we do have a private donor who's very untrusted in supporting um this being a trailhead um access for a water trail. And it is someone who has a long, rich history in trails in the community and also a relationship with Canada. Um. And so this donor, we're working with this donor to um potentially uh partner with them on interpretive signs. And and really build up the relationship of the chamber and the site and how it's a welcoming site. And um welcome to our premier creek um and potentially a water trailhead. So that's where that is. Um. I anticipate that the planning and design, I'll start thinking about it more this spring. Um. I'm trying to get Traverse rolling, as you can imagine, that's pretty robust as well as the watershed. So um my work capacity is very um limited right now, but as the weather improves, I'll get out there and I I'll I'll get designing on this. Um. I hope to have a design and cost estimate figured out so I can start pursuing funding for the twenty twenty-four cycle. With the hope of building in twenty twenty-four, that is ambitious, um but I'm gonna try my hardest and hopefully there's some money out there. Um. Any questions on that?
Maeve, I have a question, is this in place of the one that was kind of conceptualized, I think it was during the master planning process? Um. For the east side of Bridge Street, the southeast side of Bridge Street?
No, it's not, it's an addition.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions? Alright, thank you, Maeve, appreciate that.
Okay, the next one is an update on the War Memorial Field Dog Park. So as you may recall, from the budget cycle this summer, I talked about kicking off the dog park design. Um. We did have a public meeting, we conducted a survey and um I did use a portion of my budget to hire um landscape architects. Uh Dell Hatch and his team um to explore different concepts. The scope of this and the directive from the master plan was to make sure that this dog park provided ADA access to the waterfront. Um. What we unearthed when we were out there was literally an unearthing of how the bank was built historically. And that entire bank of War Memorial Field and Lakeview Park by the by the sewer treatment plant is essentially built with rebar and concrete. Remnants from who knows what, but the rebar is now pulling out of the concrete and it's disintegrating. Um. I've had several meetings with the Army Corps of Engineers and this is much bigger than just a dog park. And in order to be able to provide ADA access down to the waterfront and and keep the animals separate. Um. The biggest constraint is that we would have to rebuild the shoreline. And that um enters into the the realm of uh partnering with Army Corps of Engineers. And that um, enters into the the realm of partnering with Army Corps of Engineers, because they actually deal with the shoreline and that's their purview. Um, so that's, that's constraint number one. Constraint number two, at the time when the master plan was developed, the pickleball courts were not there. And that is a sizable area that they take up. And so um, based on that, it's also the most level area and for people with with uh, mobility disabilities, they often desire a small dog park for their smaller dogs and on a level area. Well, um, we don't necessarily have enough land in that zone for a small dog and an open dog park that would also be level and meet all the constraints. Um, so next to that is um, the mud flats. And there's some health and safety concerns with allowing the dogs out on the mud flats and could it be done? Yes. Is it in our best interest? We don't quite believe that it is in our best interest without some mitigation efforts, um, such as seasonal closures to the mud flats. Maybe um, some fencing, some infrastructure. Um, along with that comes the kayak area, the kayakers currently go through the area that would be um, just, it would be just west of the boat launch. And that is also where the dogs would be unleashed. And that's a conflict of views, so we don't have that quite figured out, especially with the new docs going in. So none of these things were looked at that closely during the master planning. And so part of what I do is I come in and I do the deep dive, I actually get into the dirt and and look at all of that kind of stuff. So that's, that's what we're doing was, we are in the dirt and we're trying to figure out if we can make this work. So with all of those things going on, um, estimated cost for this project is around one point three million. That's considerably larger than we had hoped to spend. Um, even a five hundred thousand dollar dog park is a very, it's a lot of money to spend at this point in time. Especially when the community is spending so much money on other park projects and other priorities. So my recommendation um, to you all is to not pursue this right now, I recommend that we keep it on hold, but it doesn't go away. Um, I still have my eyes open, um, and um, we're looking at other park projects or other parks for this. Or maybe re-envisioning what the dog park here can look like. But I think between all of my other projects and my availability as well as the exuberant cost estimate, my recommendation, if you're okay with it, is to put it on hold for now. Um, so I don't have an official ask, but that's my recommendation. And and that's that. Any questions?
Questions, staff or council?
Okay, great. And that was, that was it.
That's it, come on. Let's have a comment.
Yeah.
Maeve, I mean, the amount of like various, various projects of totally different types that you're juggling is super impressive. And I'm thankful that you're doing all this great work and to think that, you know, that there was no one in this position before you were here. And um, with the lot not passing as we had hoped, as some of us had hoped, I mean, the fact that you're doing all this with almost no resources as well, it just adds that that funding dimension to your job that I think, you know, it's hard for the public to really appreciate, you're, you're trying to fulfill these amazing master plans. But we got, you also are trying to find the millions of dollars it's gonna take to do it, because our community, you know, wasn't quite ready to to fund it with our, with their own dollars, so good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So also, as a Parks and Recreation graduate alumni, Eastern Washington University, to have an entire council meeting dedicated to Parks and Recreation, oh.
So joyful.
I know. So joyful. Good job, thank you both of you.
Thank you. Um, I really want to point out that it's not just me, I'm just the lucky one that gets to stand up here. I have an entire team, I've have a staff that I partner with and they have to take the brunt of my um, challenges and help me navigate this, it's not easy. Um, I also have a community of user groups, most of you are members of various user groups who support me and um, it's been about a year and a half since I've been here and tremendous learning lesson, huge opportunity. And I just want to say thank you to you all, thank you to the public, but particularly thank you to my team and to um, Jennifer. But there's all the support staff who didn't have to come tonight, which is so good, hopefully they're enjoying themselves. I never get to thank them enough and um, the support staff at the city, you know, the frontline and our administrators. Just, we can't say enough of gratitude for all, everyone here, so thank you.
Thank you, Maeve.
Okay.
Alright, uh, Madam Clerk, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on what they heard tonight regarding Parks and Recreation?
I don't believe so, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. With that, that concludes our agenda for this evening, if I'm not mistaken, indeed, and this meeting is adjourned.